I would like to call the November 15th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. First order of business is to surprise and thank Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any recognition they want to?
I don't think it's just to mention something because this will be our last opportunity to get together as a board within the month of November. I just want to recognize, and I know we mentioned it before, but Janice Nungu, our COA Director, Elder and Social Services Director. Today was sort of like the last department head meeting, so we had a little get-together just to say goodbye and to wish her the best of luck going forward. You know, she's done a great job for the town, for the seniors, for all residents. And, you know, she's going to be missed. Her last day is going to be November 30th, so if anyone has an opportunity to go down, visit her, or anyone from public to say thank you. She's still going to be here for a couple more weeks, but I just wanted to say that. And there's something else?
Wanting to mention?
Yeah, so also, we received some sad news over the weekend that our Code Enforcement Department, former Department Specialist Diane Judd passed away. While the funeral wake is going to be at Haring on Friday, we're still waiting for her news on. So she was, she joined the town in 2004, had done a lot of roles, but really excelled in that position, being really the main person that dealt with the builders' residents for people's projects and helping out. So very sorry to hear the news, but, you know, she was a very valued coworker for my year, valued friend, and she will be.
Thank you. Yes?
I have nothing else.
All right. Sweet. Two minutes. Wait for seven or five?
Our hearing actually had stomach, so.
Well, in that case, let's just get right into it. Let me, do I have to read the thing?
We do have in the board's legal notice the legal notice that should be read into the record.
All right. Let's see. So I would like to open the Upton Tax Hearing at 7:04 PM. The Upton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on fiscal year 2023 property tax classification with the Upton Board of Assessors on November 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The public hearing is intended as a way for taxpayers to express their views and ask questions about whether the town should adopt different rates for the different classes of property. Taxpayers are welcome to participate and present their views orally or in writing. Written requests must be received prior to the meeting, but no later than November 1st, 2022 by 4:00 PM. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should call or sign into the remote meeting. Upton has four classes of property in town and one tax rate. The classes are residential, commercial, industrial, and personal. Assessors are planning to recommend a single rate for all four classes of property. If you have any question, please feel free to contact the assessor's office at 508-529-1002. Note, the meeting will be held in person and virtually. Information for remote participation will be available on the agenda to be posted at www.uptonmass.gov. I think that's everything on this piece of paper.
You even got the mallet in there.
I even got, I did the mallet in the beginning, which apparently was purchased as part of the town hall renovation. So, thank you, Sam. Okay, with that, any initial questions? But why don't I pass it over to the assessors and you can share your presentation and we'll go from there?
Excellent.
Please.
So thank you for having us. And this is our tax classification PowerPoint presented by myself, founder, and both of them. And the next slide is what we're doing. All values are analogized by reviewing these sites for the residential values. All the real estate sales from calendar year 2021 and a portion of 2020 for the multifamily sales, since we don't have too many. All the commercial and industrial values, the sources are written reports for information of property. And that's a formal form of the 38D request, and it's from calendar year 2021. It is confidential. And the personal property values are also the same way via a form of list, and they are from calendar year 2021. And that's going to be the, all the data that we pulled together to create this map. So townwide, our values have changed significantly between 2022, 2023. Our residential class includes all single-family and condominium homes, as well as our residential multifamily homes. So the 3,005 of those last year, there's 3,085 this year. Last year, total value for all those classes was almost 1.3 million, there's 1.28 is the change. This year, it's almost 1.7, it's 1.66 million. That's about rounding up a 30% increase, but rounding down to 90% increase. Our commercial properties actually didn't vary too much. We lost about four commercial properties, but we gained an industrial property. We also obtained six more personal property accounts. Those values have increased, but not as much as our residential class. Our total taxable parcels in 2022, we had 3273 total. In 2023, this year, we have 3366. So the overall value for the town, while one billion, 361, 563, has changed to 1 billion, 742. That is almost 28% increase. We did get some new exempt parcels. The town bought some and the state bought some. So that's why our exempt value has increased on our exempt parcel size has increased. Those particular values, if they became taxable, would be the part of our taxable class. So they're not included in our overall value. But we should, we should see they are to report that to the Department of Revenue. It is significant, but it's good.
Yeah.
It's significant, but it's good. So that's good. So this is a recap of the past, of the current year versus the past five years. We're in term year, so every five years, there's a market turn and mandates that we'll be serving. Last fiscal year was our research of each. So this year, increased 28% prior year. But before that, they were steady increase or decrease. Some cases it bottomed off, some cases it bottomed off. And that is with the market. And so if we see this as a retrospective, so things that happened in certification in 2022 were funded calendar sales 2020. And so far, we all, over a number of years. So in 2017, you can see calendar sales in 2017 slightly rate being raised up, which resulted in an higher increase from the prior year. So that's why there was a bigger increase. And then it leveled out, and that goes with the market. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from my fellow board members?
No, no real questions, just a basic comment. You know, every year, we take a look and it's always at everybody's, the top of all of our discussions is the percentage of residential the town is. And of course, it was 94 and a fraction last year, so 94.26%. And it looks like this year, and of course, due to values and more properties coming online, it's now 95.33% of our overall tax revenue. So, you know, it's a daunting number. It's unfortunately moving in the wrong direction. But everything else looks really good?
I would like to, the purpose of the hearing is to determine whether or not we want to allocate the tax levy differently between different property classes. Here's what, it is a recommendation of the Board of Assessors that we levy a single tax rate to all classes of property. As Steve just pointed out, we're, in fact, actually, our residential base is a higher percentage of our overall property tax base. So any trying to allocate it between property, residential and commercial makes absolutely no sense. You'd have to make a substantial increase to the commercial rate to have any meaningful impact on residential. There are options to allocate within residential class, but that only is valuable and have a high degree of rental. We don't take any rental units. It's an opportunity to do that within the commercial class. And again, within Upton, there's just no reason to do that. So again, the recommendation is that we apply one rate to all of the property classes.
Okay. Wonderful. Great. I do not have any questions, and I know that, you know, there's a lot to be discussed around all things sort of tax-related and how we think about residential versus commercial versus business development, et cetera. There's times and places for those, and we'll certainly continue to have those conversations. For today's conversation around single versus varying tax rate, I think it makes sense to have a single one for all the reasons you said, though. It just makes sense. So thank you for your presentation about. With that, any questions from the public? Comments? Here are none. I will, Kenny, are you raising your hand to say something?
Yes, I did. And as you, I found, I just wanted to add, I found slide number three to be very interesting. As we were, you know, discussing about the residential and seeing the increase going from 94 to 95%, just using rounded numbers. So from what I'm seeing, you know, from my, from my lens, there's a natural shift going on. So, you know, and this is, and this is very particular to, you know, not just us, but it's to, you know, entire Commonwealth, to the entire country where, you know, residential sales, you know, they're even above asking. So, you know, when you're purchasing a home, it's more of an emotional, you know, decision. So a lot of people, they were paying, you know, at ask or even above ask. So the, you know, as you can see in the numbers, you know, it's telling. As you can see, there's a 29% increase. And if you look at the commercial, there's, it's pretty flat. I mean, it's a, we're talking about a 1.5% increase. And when you're buying commercial property or you're a, you know, a business owner, you know, there's not really an emotional, it's not really an emotional purchase. It's more of a business decision, if it's a sound, you know, decision. So as you can see, you know, the residential, you know, the values, they've increased significantly. And it's just what you've been seeing in the last year, just the residential. It's just people are paying at ask or above ask. So there's a, from what I can see, it's a natural shift going on from commercial to residential just because of the values and what, you know, what the buyer is willing to pay. So I just wanted to, you know, add that.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion, please.
Yeah, I got it.
You've got it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, to establish a single tax rate for all types of property in FY 2023.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good work. Thank you. Some additional information here, that's good.
Thank you.
Picked up 80 units of residential.
Yeah. Pretty good. I was just trying to do some math. Trying to do it now.
To get just enough time.
Yeah. Um, excellent. I think next up, we have the private road snow plowing is, he is here. I'll pass it over to you, Dennis.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Dennis.
Hello.
So as you all know, every year, according to Upton's rules and regulations, the DPW performs an inspection on our private roads in town. It's very shortlist to provide a recommendation annually to the Board of Selectmen on whether or not we feel the roads are in good enough condition for the DPW to provide snow and ice services without damaging any of our equipment. You have the list in front of you. It has been the same for many, many years. And all of the private roads that we typically plow or recommend to the board that we plow and provide snow and ice services are approved for this year. So there are no changes.
Okay, any questions?
No, it's, looks pretty straightforward to me.
Same here.
Same here. All right, Dennis, thank you. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the snow plowing of private ways as presented.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action.
Thank you.
Mr. Westgate.
Thank you, Dennis.
Looking easy. We like it. Let's see. Next up. All you, Joe, manager report.
Please. I think we're going so good. I'm like, oh, we're on resignation. We're like flying through this meeting. So as, as, as normal, everyone is very busy, either dealing with projects or, you know, associated with town meeting or elections. So the town clerk let us know this morning in the department head meeting that approximately 3,400 registered voters participated in the election, representing 61% of registered voters in town, so.
Was that really five?
It's higher than 1%.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Over 3,000. That's like, I don't think I've ever.
So we at least, especially the last, a couple of days before, we saw when they were still voting in town hall, a significant increase that Thursday and Friday before the weekend.
Yeah.
And, you know, also, and previous updates had let the board know, like, we were issuing like 1,700 mail-in votes, ballots that were being mailed out. So, you know, between the two, within person and then also mail-in votes, ballots, you know, significant volume that the treasurer, the treasurer, the town clerk's office was dealing with.
Yeah.
So they're still finalizing, I mean, the election results to get everything certified. So that's finishing up this week so that the town clerk can go on a well-cherished vacation.
Good.
Needs a big fan, incredibly busy. So within the Elder and Social Services Department, COA, support staff within the department is helping people with fuel assistance. So it's something that, that every, every fall, we help seniors and other residents in need complete application for getting fuel assistance. You know, we all, we all know not only electric rates, but also fuel costs are significantly higher than they were a year ago. So anyone that is in need of assistance, please contact the senior center for some assistance in, in helping out with fuel. Our recreation director, she's come up on being with us for a year. So it's a perfect opportunity for them, a little retrospective look at how the summer went. You know, her first beach season behind her, looking, she's looking for improvements on processes, how things handle, also communication work with departments. There was a lot to learn, sort of jumping right into situation where there's expectations for, for instance, these programs. There's campgoers that, you know, that are staying for a while. So she's taking this, this sort of pause in, in order to try to improve and identify efficiencies going forward. And also is kind of, has been talking not only with library, but also COA as far as joint programs, finding ways I can assist and provide programs throughout the year as well. Conservation Department, they are undergoing a couple enforcement actions, but also, you know, while we talk about residential development, there is some commercial development on, going on. And, you know, specifically, conservation usually sees it because very often we can't do anything about hitting a wetland, or at least a wetland is nearby. So she did let us know that they've had, been doing some wetland delineations for some commercial slash residential property up by a hill line. This is also known as the Cooks' property, so there may be more that we end up seeing coming down the road there. Also, she let, let us know that the resident has approached her about expanding parking at Second Farm to provide more access, more maybe to the back access that purely come off as part of conservation's force management plan that they recently engaged consulting for. But wanted to at least let the board know, because we've had some discussion about Second Farm, that other people are also maybe looking for arguments to place that property with. For the Board of Health, I believe I had mentioned prior that they've undertaken sort of a renewed effort to let residents know who put out their trash for, for E.L. Harvey, for pickup. They are doing monitoring, trying to make sure that people are using the town's bags because that does help to free the cost of the service to the town. So they're continuing to get a lot of calls dealing with that continued enforcement. So we do have bags for sale in some of the local shops, but we have them here at the library, here at town hall. And it, and it is one of those things that it helps offset the cost that we can provide that in brought us as a service. There are towns around us that basically say, I'll find a fire pole in my home. So there is a value to pay as you throw. The, the police department continues with a lot of success regarding paying and recruiting staff, just this week there, and the board will be getting email about this. Letters offer for employment that three officers have gone out. We have to now do some of the process for background checks before officially sort of notified the board for, for appointment. But working with Sandy, the police chief, has been really hard to fill these needed positions because of retirements. Assessors, they've really been doing a great job trying to get prepared for non-lane hearing. But also, they're starting to network now that we have evaluation set, work with the treasure collector's office to get bills out. The billing will happen in December. And just mentioning briefly about treasure collector's office. They do have revenue in and balance through in September. They're wrapping up October. That should be out in about eight and a half, just around Thanksgiving. So they're making a lot of progress and then they're going to be moving into the building to help with assessing the department to get that taken care of. Some other things as far as to be aware of. The town had been successful in getting as part of the economic development package, $125,000 for assisting to implement the town's local rapid response plan. This was something that the state worked with a consultant to identify ways that because of COVID, we can support existing businesses, but also promote businesses that we miss Upton. So that money will, will come through and we'll get to sit down with EDC and try to identify that we want to use that because there were many recommendations that came out of that plan, including one which was to improve pedestrian circulation within this Upton center. Next Monday, we actually have a site visit with an engineering consultant as well as myself. Dennis married the conservation agent to sort of look across at the gravel lot, look at not only the land we own, but not the community center, but also DFW, to try to see where we can start to create a pedestrian circulation loop, you know, bridge or some sort of footpath in order to really suck the brain that circulation plan that was identified in that rapid response plan fruition. Because we're also just coming out of town meeting with Road Street Bridge, there's that, that really, that opportunity to start to identify how we want to sort of pull this together and make it a walkable town center. You know, one of the things, and anecdotally, talking to people at DFW, especially in the summer or when there's car events, parking is always an issue. And, you know, one of the things is traffic, pedestrian traffic, walking along Milford, coming around the bend to try to get to the DFW, something like this. Not only to improve circulation, but it will improve safety if there's another way for people to get to the DFW for baseball, sporting events, and quite frankly, even emergency response. So those are things that we're working, working on. I did hear back from the state. They are looking at scheduling the 25% design hearing for January 12th. I'm waiting for confirmation because I want to make sure that we know when we're going to be able to get plans because I'd like to get advance warning out, have some sort of workshop even with the board to get a better understanding in advance of that.
Yeah.
So I'm waiting for that before confirming with them because if they say, well, no, we'll give it out the week before. Really wanting to have a bit more time, so.
Right, want to like put it on the website, circulate it, let people know it's there, let people look at it, digest it, and.
Yeah. So.
Because that's really an integral part of, before you really talk about that pedestrian management plan, we really need to get some sort of solid idea of exactly what the state is doing.
Exactly.
Right? Because our plan is only going to be so effective if we don't know exactly what the state's got.
Yeah.
So that 25%, and we wait 15 months for the 25%.
Exactly. Right? So once I get confirmation as far as when they're going to be able to release the plans, if they were releasing it next week, that would make sense. Give us a good month and a little bit in order to look at it and word out. If it was then a really short window, then we'd be looking at pushing it back because, you know, public confusion is going to be important on public business. It's going to be, it's significantly needed. But, you know, I know a lot of people's reaction can be like, it may be too far, but, you know, we need to be able to really understand it and follow.
I mean, that, people look at the impact of power.
Yeah.
Big.
Oh, exactly. Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Questions, comments, observations?
I guess two quick observations, comma, questions. So the clerk's page, the election results, when do you suspect all of that will be uploaded and be available for residents to view?
I'll, I'll find out from Denise on that. I know that there's unofficial results that were posted. It was on the news and announcements page, but it may not be. I don't believe it's that under her page for election results.
I just took a peek and I didn't see it. So.
Well, she has until November eighteenth. She can't shut it down until November eighteenth, once all the military votes and all of that.
I suspected that it would need to be official before she actually posted it. I was just curious if we knew. Is the eighteenth the actual date?
Yeah.
Okay. So probably Monday, Friday or Monday. That was question one. And question two, you had mentioned about the police officers. We had a warrant article for training for two officers, like suspecting that two of the officers will be officers who are being put through the academy in the very near future.
And then possibly another in the next calendar year.
So in two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
That's it. I had nothing else. A lot of good stuff.
Yeah, love it. Same thing. All set. Okay. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, um, we have public comment. Is there anyone that would like to share any public comment questions?
Do you have someone, um, that's, uh, signed in to, to listen? I did have to mute because of background. So if a person that was on the team's meeting wanted to speak, you would just have to unmute yourself.
Next we have, uh, resignation from the DPW Building Committee, um, and Technology Committee. Uh, this is Rick McGuire. Just get to his letter.
John Bouquet.
Oh, thanks. Perfect. Yeah. Um, and John Bouquet. So I, I, I know Rick, uh, well, and he has, serves on the Finance Committee and has served on several boards and committees over the years. And we're very grateful for, uh, his service and, and same with John Bouquet. Uh, it's great to have folks contributing to, you know, local government and these types of volunteer roles. Are always invaluable, uh, to the community to be able to get people to, to volunteer and participate in this way. So we're, we're always sorry to see folks go, but we know that uh, often it's to pursue other, other opportunities in the town and to focus on other service-related, uh, work. So we're, we're grateful for that. Any other comments? Otherwise we can take the motion to accept the resignations.
Just like to publicly thank them for all their service to the town.
Yes, same. I agree. It's always, um, a lot more time than many times people expect to give and that it, uh, you know, it can be a daunting task. So.
It is a daunting task.
Yeah. Yes. So thank you to both of these gentlemen for serving. And I can make a motion if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignations of Richard McGuire from the DPW Building Committee and John Bouquet from the Technology Committee with regrets.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you. Next we have the Upton Fire and EMS Association, uh, request for the Town Common Decorating. Don't know if that's you, Joe, if there's someone here to talk about it.
Um, I think the request memo is where it stands on its own.
Yeah.
Sandy, you had talked, you talked to, um, uh, Seth directly.
Sure, through email to let know that it was on this, um, agenda.
So what we can do is.
I mean, this is something we've done every year.
Yeah. Why don't we just read it since no one's here to talk about it? So there, this is a request from the Upton Fire and EMS Association. They are kindly requesting up to but no more than two thousand five hundred dollars from the town's beautification fund to decorate the town common for the two thousand twenty-two holiday season. The funds will be used to upgrade outdated and damaged lighting that will be used at the town library and the common. All final invoices will be presented once received. Um, and this is submitted by Seth Grill on behalf of the Upton Fire and EMS Association Board. So, uh, this is something, again, they've been doing for, uh, on again, off again, but certainly for the past few years with a lot of encouragement and support from, I know each of us and also other folks in the community. It's a, it's a great and kind service that they provide to the town, um, during the holiday season. So I'm always a, a big supporter of this as I, as I know you both are. So, um, any comments, questions, or otherwise we'll take a motion.
I'll move the motion.
All right. The only question I was going to make, I fired off a quick email. Of course, we had a meeting just a few meetings ago with the trust fund commissioners and there was that question as far as, you know, what are we spending out of which fund? So the only thing I thought might be interesting is if we just happen to know what we've expended so far out of Restine D. And I don't recall if you've done anything as far as beautification other than probably the fireworks. So I would suspect we're, we've got.
Yeah, there's.
And plenty of them in there, I suspect, right?
Yes, for sure. I don't know the balance and I also don't know what we've spent out of it this year other than.
I mean, we should have balances now seeing how everything's been submitted to D O R. So we should be able to get a, um, an update on all the balances of each of the trust funds, I would think.
So, um, looking and I think, uh, and the email for this off to the board, this came in November sixth. I'll check to see if I actually had forwarded. Um, Kenny had, uh, sent along the, uh, trust fund update and so for Restine, um, balance for, so July first, two thousand twenty-one, uh, it was, uh, one hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five. Uh, income was nine thousand five hundred and eighty-seven. Expenditures were four thousand two hundred and ninety-five for resulting balance of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars.
Perfect. Yep. That's what we're after. Nice job. Thank you, sir. See, we're making progress here, guys. This is good. This is good. We should pat ourselves on the back. It'll be taken a hundred years. We finally better figure it out.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Upton Fire EMS Association's request for up to two thousand five hundred dollars from the Restine D Trust Fund for beautification purposes to decorate the town common for the two thousand twenty-two holidays.
I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Next up, we have, uh, several one-day liquor license requests from Knickmuck Rod and Gun Club. I know they were here last, uh, meeting or the time before that. Um, I don't know if there's anyone here today. Uh, oh, all right. Fantastic. Welcome back. Um, so, uh, if there's, uh, we have the dates here of December third, fourth, tenth, eleventh, seventeen, eighteen, and then January seventh, eighth, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. I don't know if, if there's anything else or any other comments you have or questions.
So our game plan is, we have three functions at thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen that people want to do at our home. Um, so our game plan is to stop accepting applications for rentals and at that point pursue the ADCC for the full license, um, which the club hire lawyer to make sure that everything is done exactly how it needs to be done. So we're really looking forward to moving forward with that and not having to stop. So, but it is lovely to be able to come in here and see you guys and make a, find a way to make it work. So. And I got a check today. If you guys approve them, sorry to leave this with you guys if you want to organize later, whatever it seems preferred.
You can leave with me or we can take care of it later.
Absolutely. Any questions?
No.
Yeah. That looks, looks good. So it's seven dates in December. Is that right? I think you've missed the thirty-first. So I'm just thinking.
Oh, yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah. Seven in December, five in January. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can make the motion if everybody's good.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the application submitted by Knickmuck Rod and Gun Club, event manager Allison Foley tomorrow, special one-day, all, all, all alcoholic beverages licenses for in several events at Knickmuck Rod and Gun Club, eighty-eight Fisk Mill Road, Upton, Mass, for the dates of December third, fourth, tenth, eleventh, seventeenth, eighteenth, and thirty-first, and January seventh, eighth, thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
I'm working next week. Do you have it all made up already? I mean, if you have it all made up already. Oh, perfect. All right. So I wasn't sure when I was.
See, there's that, right?
We wish everybody paid their taxes that quickly. There you go. Thank you very much. Good luck. Yes. Had a very nice time there a couple of weeks ago for a Halloween party. So thank you. Well, thank you.
He was modeling too. He did a little modeling.
Thank you. It was just great. Thank you. Good times. All right. Next up, we have the annual liquor license renewals. Um, Sandy, anything here of note?
Um, not of note. We're still, um, continuing the inspections, um, which will be completed within the next week or two. So just make your motion contingent upon that. Um, as you know, the ADCC requires all alcohol licenses to be, um, processed in November or have your approval in. And that's why we're doing just this section. And of course, I think at the first meeting in November, we'll be prepared to do all the licensing town, the common fix and the class twos, as well as, um, some of the alcohol licenses have, um, common fix attached and entertainment too.
Got it.
So we don't have to vote them all in November. They have.
No, you have to just do the alcohol that you're going to renew their alcohol license in November. And then we'll do all the rest in December.
So these are all the alcohol, right?
Just alcohol.
Okay.
Yeah. And the contingency is actually here in the motion. So that makes it a little easier.
Right.
Great. I'll take a motion.
You're up.
I'm up again.
All right. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following liquor license renewal applications contingent on sex, successful inspections with the following. Country Corrupt Super, Colonial Liquors, R A Perkins Liquor Plus, Red Rock Grill and Bar, K B Holdings, one eighteen Main Street Kitchen and Spirits, Selenius's Cellar, Fisk and Mink, and Rushford and Sons Brew House.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by unanimous action.
It's my mind now that the Rose Garden didn't offer renewal. I do expect to hear any day now about the transfer of license
Yes.
to another party.
Okay. All right. And then they'll be covered.
They'll be covered.
Because it will transfer. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Uh, next up, we have approval of the minutes from October eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and November first.
Uh, they look good to me, other than I was not here for the twenty-fifth meeting. That was that remote meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, um, I can make a motion for the other two dates and then I will, um, stay, you know, I will abstain from the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes of October eighteenth and November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-fifth.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
One extension. Motion carries by majority action. Thank you. All right. Next up, we will be moving to room. No room. We're going to proceed to a workshop session. Um, I would like to point out that we're doing so forty minutes early. Did a good job.
No idea how long you guys ran a tape with the tax plus.
I know. I, I gotta admit, we're getting, we're getting better at this. This is good. This is good. So.
I'm good for a couple of long-winded questions.
Well, I think, I think it was Bill sort of revalidating, like, just a reminder, we're here to talk about single refers.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, a lot, right?
Stopped any other town calling it down.
No, it was longer. It's ninety-five percent, ninety-five percent.
Yeah. I remember one year they actually did the math and talked about doing fifty percent. And it was very, very small money for the impact that you have.
Right. Like you're doubling taxes on businesses to save the average taxpayer, you know, three cents on the, on the thousand.
Exactly.
But I have this thought that the state set a, um, a rule of thumb for percentages between split.
I think. Just. I think typically, I think if I remember correctly, it's a fifty percent change. So you take, you know, your other uh, tax rates out there and those would be fifty percent higher than a residential rate. But as you mentioned, it has such a minute change.
Right.
And would devastate some of our small businesses. The few that we have
Right.
uh, aren't in a position to pay twice as much in our tax or fifty percent, you know, again in their taxes. Like it's tough. All right. Very good. Well, we will, uh, disconnect from the, uh, Zoom and the online portion of the meeting and, uh, continue here, uh, in the room for the workshop.
If anybody wants to.
It's a public meeting. It's what we're here for.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.